I have one person sign up for public input time, and that is Colin Dias, the 560 Ray Street. Discussion topic is Phenom.
Greetings, Mayor Correa, members of the Fall River School Committee. I just wanted to address the preparation of our high school students in our city for post-secondary education. Last Thursday, I went along with some of my fellow Bristol Community College Student Senate Members and other BCC students to an event which advocates for lower tuition and more resources to college students and colleges, an event known as Phenom. I saw college students and upper-class high school students from all across our Commonwealth pick at the State House and sit down with our elected representatives to fight for a positive cause, which is to lower the cost of school from early education to K through 12 and into post-secondary education, which was the main focus of the event. I would love to see the city unite with BCC and attend future Phenom events under the banner of Fall River. I believe communication between our student governments, mainly Durfee, which I'm a part of the student government on the Bristol side, can achieve such a task. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number one is a vote to approve the Fall River School Fiscal Year 2020 Draft Operational Budget in the amount of $106,642,648.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Martins.
I wish to have a parliamentary inquiry with regards to this particular item and the next item as well. I don't understand, this is supposed to be the 2020 budget. And from what I understand here, that material that I have, 101% of net school spending is 160 million, whereas this item says 106 million.
Yeah, we can get some clarification, but I believe there's certain elements that are not included in that number, that are not being represented, such as healthcare, et cetera.
Sure, the indirects.
So, Mr. Martins, so the, as part of the 160 million dollars, you have the indirect costs for the city for, you know, about $54 million included in that total. And so...
At least net school spending.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't say that.
When you, when you account for the city indirect costs, when you include that, it does.
But then what should be is that, although it says operational budget, we have to approve... I don't know how you want to see with that.
Well, Mr. Martins, what I would recommend, hoping to other suggestions, but I would vote on this budget to fulfill the timeline required, to get this to City Council and to get the debate going on the other side of city government. And we can put it on the next agenda if you want to take a ceremonial vote on the full 160 with the indirects. But for the purposes of tonight, and what's on tonight's agenda, is the number that's been provided by the school department as the draft operational budget. Does that make sense to you?
At some point in time, I guess this is a preliminary thing, a preliminary vote.
It is, it says, it says it right there, FY 2020 Draft Operational Budget.
Okay, I still feel that it is wrong in that the budget amount is not specified here, and we're expected to, to vote on at least the minimum school spending.
It's been the practice here in Fall River that the, what's voted on is the operational budget separate from the transportation budget, not including the Schedule 19 expenses. Therefore, when you add up those total figures, looking at what I proposed at 101, you're absolutely right, it's 160.7 million dollars. That is the 101 figure. This 106 figure represents the operational side of 101%. And that's how Kevin has done it the last several years here in Fall River, that so the school committee submits two numbers.
Lots of things have been done in the past that, in essence, we just pass right through it. But I think anyone looking at that would say, okay, your budget is 106 million. That's the school's budget. No, it's not. It's 160 million.
Right, with the indirects and the transportation, et cetera, correct.
Absolutely so.
But for tonight's purposes, you're not voting on the indirects, and you're not voting on the, on the other portions.
Okay, that will end my inquiry there.
Okay.
But that particular item.
I have no problem, so that, I, I think it's important, I don't think anybody would disagree, to get on the record and get, get on the camera, and, you know, the people at home understand what the total is, we can put on the next agenda, the total budget, budget that we support as a school committee. Is that a fair compromise?
As long as we get to that 160,662,706.
Okay, very good. You yield?
I yield.
Other questions? Was there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Aguirre.
Yes, thank you. I'm just confused myself. So, if we're looking at the budget documents, where it says FY 2020 at 115,792, what does that represent? And the one, the line right next to it is FY 19, operating at 106,5.
So, the 106,5 and the 115 represent the operating budget. It does not include the indirect costs for the city. And so, within that operating budget is our school appropriation and our transportation appropriation to come to the 116 million that are there. What's going to change, and what I'm going to update as soon as this meeting is over, is item two has transportation at 11.2 million dollars. So, the 115 that you see there will increase by about $2 million to reflect the additional transportation.
Yep.
From what was initially submitted.
So, if you take transportation out of the 106, which is the FY 19, you're telling me that the operating budget's only 98 million?
No, no, no. If you take from the 116, that's there.
No, I mean, in FY 2019, the one we're in now?
Yep.
On the sheet, it says 106,5.
Yep.
So, if you take the 9 million for transportation off of that, get to 98.
Yes.
Is truly what all of our line items would add up to, is what you're saying.
Not including the city, not including the city side costs, yes.
Which is 146 total.
Yeah, I understand that piece, but, I mean, we've got $9 million difference here, you know, to the good, and I understand this to a whole bunch of stuff.
Correct.
But the 98 is not very, I don't know, it's just not clear, per se. We should have a budget that adds up to 98 million over line items?
We do.
So, I agree with Mr. Martins in a way, that why don't we just say, call that what it is, instead of playing games with putting in, not playing games in a bad way, but just to be clear and transparent, we're spending 98 million dollars on the things we vote on now, as I call that an operating budget. What you're calling it is that plus the transportation is kind of what I...
Correct. So, the, so, in, within the budget of the city, we have two appropriations. We have a school department appropriation, and we have a transportation appropriation. So, those two figures added up total what my total operating budget, my operating budget is.
But the city picks up the entire cost of all transportation?
They do, yes.
In that number?
They do.
Yeah, but that's not...
That's the part that's just getting me confused, because if the city's picking up the entire transportation piece, we should have that be a standalone item? And then the other piece of the operating budget would be a total standalone item? So, when somebody mentioned 101, you basically backed that down and are saying that that's 101 of the governor's number?
Yes, it is.
At present, 106, what is it, 106,5?
The 106,5 is FY 19, the 1, the 116 roughly is FY 20.
Because, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but the agenda number is 106,642, and then the paperwork number is 106 something else.
The, the 106 that you're referring to, Ms. Aguirre, is for FY 19.
Yeah.
20 is 106,6.
Right. I just, I'm concerned about what we approve, because I think what the purpose of this is, so we can create a draft budget, put it out there for the public to see?
Correct.
And it needs to add up to that number.
I got it.
Correct?
Yep.
All right, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Martins? Follow, sorry, just saying a follow-up question.
Yeah, transportation is not part of net school spending.
No, it's not.
So, that's a separate vote in and of itself, in there. The part of what should be here is that the city contribution, when we first received this budget, is 31,141,326, plus the 1% of the net school spending, whatever that comes out to be.
Just under 1.6 million.
Okay, so therefore, the city's contribution would be 32,800,000. Is that correct, about?
No, sir.
I'm sorry?
No.
It's not? Where am I going wrong?
So, what you have in front of you is a budget that totals, on the operating side, 116 million dollars. The city costs total 54 million dollars, to give you a total budget of 169 million dollars, almost 170 million. When you back out transportation, you're at 160 million dollars, which is our 101, quote unquote, of the governor's figure.
You said 160, 167.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's what I just said, in the fact that the Chapter 70 state aid is 127 million, almost 128 million.
Correct.
And then the city contribution is 31 million plus the 1.7.
But I, but the way you, just, just to correct, so I, when I heard your statement, you said the city costs, so the city cost in actuality is, you know, on the city side is 54 million dollars. You're, you're referring to, to what the foundation budget is, Mr. Martins, correct?
I'm looking at this first page that was in this book. It says, "Chapter 70 state aid, 127.9 million." Okay?
Yep.
And it says, "City contribution, 31.1 million."
Yes.
Okay? That comes out to 159 million, plus the 1%, if that, for overs, that's 1.7 million.
Yes.
So, that should come out to be 160 million.
Yes.
Not counting the transportation, because transportation is not part of this.
Yes.
Transportation certainly is an educational expense to the city of Fall River, granted, but it's not part of net school spending, and therefore, the, transportation is a separate item, which will require a separate vote to approve.
And it does.
It's the second agenda item.
It's the second item, Mr. Martins.
Okay. We haven't gotten to that yet. Okay, all right.
I yield. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Question, sorry. I apologize, I was just looking at something.
Mr. Aguirre.
So, when we get our monthly budget reports, am I missing, I'm just trying to look quick, the transportation is on here?
It's in the total. It's in the total 106.
No, I'm saying, in one of these, the monthly reports?
Yes. It's part, so you, so it's broken out in a couple of line items, because we have salaries that fall in transportation as well. So, we have the transportation coordinator, we pay for half the couriers, so that, that combined comes to, you know, comes to the 9 million in this year's budget.
Is all within the 106 currently?
Yes, yes, it is.
And now, you want us to approve a 106 with the transportation in it, or?
That does not include transportation.
So, if we added 11.7 million to the 106, is what you're...
Correct.
What you're talking about.
Exactly.
The only other question I have, because I think this is on the agenda, I think for the first time, is, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there's not, because of the Finance Subcommittee, it's very difficult to, I have a lot of questions on the budget that I think we need to look at and study it and tweak it a little bit, so, conversations I've had with the superintendent, this is just a draft document, so there can be changes made for the betterment of the district, or opinions of the committee, whatever. So, I don't want to ask the questions that I have necessarily here today, but I do want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that there will be a time when we're going to actually debate the specific line item, so, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Yep.
All right, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
I'm staying. Item number two is vote to approve the Fall River Public Schools FY 2020 Draft Transportation Budget in the amount of 11.2 million dollars. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, again, parliamentary inquiry.
Mr. Martins.
That number, 11.2 million dollars, should be the sum total of all of the bids, the lowest bids, lowest responsible bidders. When I add up the lowest responsible bidders, that comes out to 11,727,000. Almost, we need something new here. Well, perhaps, Mr. Almeida can explain what we just passed out.
Sure. So, you were inquiring about what the transportation appropriation was, so the...
Yes.
The transportation appropriation in front of you is for 11.2 million dollars. What that includes is all the bids that came in for the vans, the yellow buses. In addition, it includes the salary for the transportation coordinator, half the salary for the couriers, includes a small supply line. It all, in addition, it includes the Serta amount, because that's separate from what's in the bid. So, when you add all that up, comes up to about 11.9 million dollars on your sheet. When you back out what the expected reductions are of just under 800,000, you come to 11.2 million dollars.
I don't understand this, because of the fact that Tremblay was just about 5 million dollars. Wailing City, 3.9 million dollars. Amaral, 2.6 million dollars. Fisher, 155,000. Those were all the responsible losses, the lowest bidder.
The Fisher amount is not, it's not eligible for, it's not eligible, it's, excuse me, it's, it's an eligible expense for net school spending, because any, the athletics and the field trips are club kind of things that are, that we pay for out of our budget.
Okay. When I add those up, if you want to subtract that 155 million, which I didn't know, it says, "School and transportation," even though city pays for it, I understand that.
The 155 we pay for.
It's all, oh, man. I add that up to, it comes out to 100, sorry, 11,727, subtract out the 155,000, then, that's about 11.6, I'm sorry, yeah, about 11.6 million. Whereas, this is 11.2.
The, the consultant, the consultant told us we could reduce transportation by 758,000 dollars, in his analysis. So, when you take the 11.9 that I, that you have in front of you right now, and you back out the 758,000, that's the 11.2 million dollars.
The consultant can say, "Just reduce it?" When the budget, the minimum bids are here? How can that happen?
So, Mr. Martins, the, after reviewing the bids as they came in, some of the bids, all of the bids had included buses that we are no longer going to use. They were bid, the documents had said, and I don't have the exact amount in my head, 72 buses on a particular route. After careful review, there were 10 buses total that were not needed on the bid. So, that was reduced by 10 buses, so the savings off, because again, all of these bids are more or less, we're not locked into any one number. So, they can be more buses, they can be less buses. We're looking for a per-bus price, and according to the bid, the per-bus price was as listed. However, with those 10 bus savings, we're able to reduce by that 758, is it, 758,000?
You know, it's amazing, Mr. Pacheco, you know this, Mr. Almeida knows this, I didn't know this. How am I supposed to know? When I add up those, those minimum, you know...
I understand, Mr. Martins, I, I understand exactly. I, I'm telling you how that, that number is, as we've arrived to that number. We also spoke briefly about this at, at the FNO Subcommittee meeting. So, you weren't there, and I understand.
You know, I think by now, you should know that I'm a stickler for numbers.
Absolutely.
And there, always been, and I always will, okay? I, you know, and it's not my money, but I control it, or I look at it as if it were my money. I yield, is 11.2, that explanation, I guess?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
I do appreciate the work you guys are doing on the budget as far as transportation is concerned. I still consider myself a newbie on the committee, it's my second budget go-around, so I'm still learning. But I, I remember that last year's proposal was somewhere slightly north of 9 million, and I see this year's proposal at 11.2 million. It's, it's a considerable increase, but I realize that Fall River, you, you say here that, according to the costs submitted, the Fall River bus costs are significantly less than most other school districts. I trust, I trust you on that. I, I know that these cost increases are not our cost increases, they're what we have to deal with on the outside. That being said, the cost increases bring certain factors, and in that next section on our, on our agenda here, down the bottom, there's a bullet point that says, "Due to the age of the current buses being utilized, the requirement for newer buses for this contract will apply." And it states that Wailing City, there's a number 43, is that 43? Do they need 43 new buses? Is that what you're saying with that?
I'm not quite sure if he needs 43 new buses, I, I think he needs 43 in total.
He needs 43 total.
So, he does, he does have, right, he does have quite a few buses that he will be upgrading, along with a few of the other companies.
So, are their buses well-maintained and safe and reliable?
They've, they've passed the, the appropriate inspections. However, most, if not all, of, of the bids that are, that are going on currently in Massachusetts with the other districts, are requiring the buses be upgraded, and we followed suit with that, along with cameras on the buses, GPS, those are all added items.
Sure, so that, that's all coded, I get it.
Exactly.
But I'm still wondering why Wailing City's bid was so much less than the other bidders that were involved in the process.
He may not have as many new buses to buy.
So, does that mean his current fleet is, is up to snuff?
It would be up, would be newer than maybe some of the others, yes.
All right. The next item I have, and I'm, and I'm picking on Wailing City, because as a member of this body, I received a couple of constituent calls that alerted me, and two within three months. And so, making the public aware of, of everything, you know, there were two incidents involving their bus monitors on Wailing City buses, within three months at one school, and that really concerned me. So, I really want us, as a committee, and as the, as the public, to be aware that if we're going to give a bid out, then it carries heavy responsibilities for the public safety of our students. That's, to me, that's paramount. And I see that the costs are increased here between 9 million plus last year to 11,2 this year, so we're paying through the nose for these services. And, and in the meantime, I don't feel, if we're going to pay through the nose, then why did I have to receive calls on two incidences within three months at the same school involving Wailing City bus monitors? That really concerns me. So, I want that to be, to be noted, I want the public to be aware, Wailing City's line item with this transportation is 3.9 million dollars, that's a considerable amount of money for one company. And I just hope that their buses are safe, and that their monitors, as well as their physical equipment, is, is up to snuff.
If I could, Mr. Corey, the, just as the cameras in, in our schools are extremely valuable to seeing a lot, you know, whether it's fights, or whether it's an incident in, in a hallway, the same goes on with the buses. And not many of our buses currently, we weren't requiring, the last time we put a bid out, but not many of our buses have cameras in them. The new requirement would be three cameras in every bus. So, it's going to give us eyes on the students, but it'll also give us eyes on the driver and the, and the monitor, as to what's going on, on the buses.
I hope they get a message that the school committee now is concerned about the level of their bus monitors, and that they need to, you know, make sure that they're fully competent to fulfill that role. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Coogan.
I got a question on the cameras. The law requires three, Kenny?
They don't. The minimum coverage in the bus, three cameras will cover everything we need to cover. Some communities have five, two outside the bus. Any new buses will require extra cameras, along with other safety devices that we currently don't have in those buses, so, new buses will come through with other equipment. And the GPS is going to allow us to track that bus no matter where it is.
The new buses come through automatically with that?
Some will, and, and in our specs, it was required.
Well, that cost is passed on to us, am I right?
Yes, it is. Along with every call, everything we ask for, we're paying for, absolutely.
So, if, if we went with two cameras on a bus, or three, what would the savings be like?
I'm, I'm not sure what, each individual camera, but at the facility Subcommittee, Subcommittee meeting, there was questions asked, and the consultant is going to get us all of those answers before our next meeting.
As well as the GPS, because we're not sending those, we're all in Fall River, I hope that we know.
Exactly. It's basically when buses are late, parents will be able to see where that bus is.
Okay. Because some of these things that I'm reading on the add-ons, are we going, are you going through all that, all this stuff with them?
Yes.
So, that, that number that you gave us tonight may be reduced more?
Whatever, whatever the committee decides they, they want or don't want on that, on that menu, then we can talk to the individual better.
So, you're giving, going to give us a menu of the cost of all these items?
Exactly.
All right, I appreciate it, Ken, thanks. I yield.
Okay. Mr. Corey with a follow-up question, and then Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, just one follow-up question, Ms. Pacheco. Given the increased cost from this year's transportation line item over last year's, what type of increases are these? Are they cost of living? Are they salaries? Are they upkeep and maintenance?
It's all of the above. There's the Affordable, Affordable Care Act that is coming into play.
So, it's federal legislation?
The minimum wage, all of those things are coming into play, and the, the current contract did not allow for those adjustments to the company. So, some of the companies who were bidding, obviously, are going to make sure that all of that stuff is covered on this round.
So, so, we're doing our best to cover these rising costs, so I just wonder what the, the future pretends, or how much... uh, the future pretends, or how much more will these costs continue to rise?
So in the contract, it's a five-year, it's only a COLA increase. So what we see now, um, with the exception of any federal mandate that could trigger, um, in a contract negotiation, um, the cost will only go up by that COLA.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
So on the, on the sheet that we received, the total transportation, eleven point nine, what is an apples-to-apples comparison to the current year?
I, I don't have that for you, Mr. Aguirre, and I, and I, again, when, um, when we have the consultant, as soon as he comes back, um, he's got a list of everything that was asked the other night.
But this is a kind of a different question, it might have been actually a Mr. Almeida question. So if the, everything that adds up to the eleven nine is allowable, um, transportation cost, am I to assume that we get the paper the other day that said it was eight point nine million?
Yes.
Kind of the same?
Yes.
So obviously, that's a tremendous increase. We said this at the Subcommittee, I don't want to rehash it. We asked for some more information, I'm assuming that's coming to the April eighth full committee? Is that accurate?
You'll have it before then.
You what?
I'm sorry. You'll have that information before then, so you'll have had a chance to look at it before the April eighth.
So the next line that says reduction from futures, to be quite frank, I don't believe a word that guy's telling us.
And I guess that information, Mr. Aguirre, is not going to do you any good.
But what I'm saying, that seven hundred fifty-eight thousand savings, all of a sudden we come to a meeting, we do bids on something, then all of a sudden, we're going to cut ten buses out. That looks bad. And I don't have real, a lot of faith in what this gentleman told us. He came before us and told us he was going to get people to bid, we're going to save money, and then boom, we got a thirty percent increase to three million dollars. That's foolish, as far as I'm concerned. But with that being said, we just need a, basically a fake number to throw out there for, we're not approving the contracts right now to this, we just need a number, correct?
The contract for the, uh, the other buses has been approved and has gone to the city for approval. The, um, these currently have no...
Meaning the vans, the vans.
The vans, I'm sorry, the vans, yeah.
So basically, we're not approving the contracts at this present time?
Absolutely not.
We're approving a number, which is a fake number. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve eleven million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, fifty-six dollars and twenty cents for the total transportation, because I think that's the most accurate that we can have. And if they can get real savings, then we'll talk about it later. But there's no sense in, in going back and forth here about it. So I make that in the form of a motion based on the data that we have.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Seconded on the motion. Mr. Coogan.
Kenny, that seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, that came from reducing ten buses?
Ten buses, monitors, yeah, the, the total cost.
And that's already been lopped out, according to what you're going for?
It is, it is to be lopped out. It hasn't been, nothing has been changed with the contract, because we haven't awarded any contracts.
But we don't need those ten buses?
Exactly.
Okay.
And again, that number doesn't include any other savings that we find through, uh, through tiering and other, right, methods.
I yield, sorry.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're asking us to basically tonight approve a placeholder? Because if I understand it correctly, once you get us that apples-to-apples comparison, and we can see what accounted for the thirty percent increase, this committee can choose to go out, rebid the RFPs and change the scope of the RFP?
Or you can just, um, reduce the cost of those individual items, and as long as that bidder is willing to accept those...
To accept.
Extra items, then...
But at the very least, we can change the RFP.
Yes, you can.
This committee can determine...
Absolutely, and you can go out and rebid.
Based on what determines the additional, the additional thirty percent cost increase, this committee can decide to change the RFP and go out and rebid. If the committee chose to do that, would you have enough time to get those bids out and back?
If it happens on April eighth, um, then we would, you know, put that document together and get it out on the street.
I'm not opposed to Mr. Aguirre's amendment to propose the total transportation eleven point nine, because I still think, again, we're trying to indicate to the city what the transportation cost may be, not exactly what it's going to be, because we still haven't approved the bids, uh, except for the vans. And so there's, there is still an opportunity for us to either rebid, or, like you said, reduce the cost and go out to rebid and see if there's an appetite there for those bus companies to rebid on it.
And, and the bid document is based on current use without any kind of, um, you know, loss through attrition or consolidating routes. We also talked about changing times, um, I mean, as far as distances, I'm not times, uh, distances, um, for who's getting transported, other special services, um, and also, um, programs that we're providing at one or two schools and not at, at all the schools. So there's a whole bunch of things that are coming into the...
What is the drop dead date that you need this committee to vote to award contracts for transportation?
Um, I would, I would venture to say sometime in April, we would need to have this done, because it's going to take sixty days, the bids in and out, which would, which would get us into June, uh, and that's getting it real close.
And again, I'm not going to hold you through it, but your best guess, I mean, next week, I think, is April one or...
Right, the following week, two weeks, so April eighth, if it could be on the agenda for April eighth.
To award the final bids, or to make a determination as to whether or not we're going to...
If you're not going to, even if you didn't award on that date, you would at least, I, we would know whether or not you're going to go out and rebid.
Right.
So if you're going to make a decision to go out and rebid, I would ask that it be done on the eighth, so that we're not backed in, you know, backed into a corner.
And then those bids would get back within, you said, the total process is sixty days?
The total process is sixty days, and then we would look at what we have, and then go through the award process.
You know, I know it's always been the work of the committee to make determinations about transportation. However, fairness to the city, they pick up the bill. And so, you know, I, I think a conversation between our finance team and the city's finance team about what's option, what options are available for this committee is probably appropriate. I, I think that's the fairest thing to do. I mean, I don't know what the city's finance team is, is accounting for or anticipating their transportation number to be in their twenty budget, but I think we should have a conversation. They may say, we got it covered at that number. And they may say, no, I'm going to urge the school committee to consider going out to rebid, because that's not a number at this point that we, um, that we can afford. So, um, I think before now, I think, excuse me, before April eighth, I think a conversation with the city from our financial team with theirs about this transportation number, because it does, um, account for an increase, a substantial one. Um, you know, I agree with Mr. Aguirre, you know, and again, there are a number of factors that you already explained, and I'm sure Mr. Labrie will do his best to convince my colleague, Mr. Aguirre, as to why they went up thirty percent. But the reality is that I was going into this process feeling as though that Mr. Labrie and, and Futures were going to be able to provide us with a savings, and instead, we got a thirty percent increase, uh, which is concerning again, because the transportation has continuously gone up for the last several years. And it's, it's a big number for transporting students, so, um, I'm okay, I'll support the higher number, I guess because it's a placeholder. I think it's, Superintendent and I had a conversation, I know Mr. Almeida and I have as well, I think it's best to give the city the best indication, or the worst-case scenario, if you will, as to what transportation may look like. If it comes in less, that's great, but I'd rather be having the conversation it came in less than to be offering up a number that's much lower, and then finding out after we have to award bids that it's going to be higher, because I think by then, the city's going to have already constructed their budget, and I don't think that's fair to last minute, say to their financial team, oh, by the way, the bids came back, they're higher, the number we gave you is off by X amount of dollars, and now you've got to find it to put it in your twenty budget so you can balance it. So, um, I'll support the number at this point, but I think there's still a lot of work to be done by this committee with communication to the city as to what that financial, uh, cost will be for transportation for FY twenty. With that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Aguirre, on your motion?
So the seven hundred fifty-eight thousand dollar reduction, just so everyone can kind of understand my skepticism in that, we went out to bid for the big package, nothing happened, we had to go out and rebid. Mr. Labrie, as a so-called expert on the transportation, said we're going to go out on this, no word of five, ten buses less. We put the same thing out, people bid on the same thing, all of a sudden, the bids come in high, and within a short time, boom, we got ten buses off. That's why I'm skeptical. I don't really see it. We've gotten zero, zero information on what ten routes they are or anything, other than magically, we're just saving seven hundred fifty-eight thousand. So I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it's right to just put it out there and transparent, let the city folks see it, let the public see it. We got a real problem in transportation, thirty percent, three million dollars in one year, because, don't get me wrong, and Mr. Costa's correct, there's only so much money to go around. We approve the budget that's going to have more than the regular hundred percent, this is going to come out of all those nice things that we just talked about, potentially, for the kids in the classroom and the schools. So I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Costa, let's just do this and move on, but I can't stress enough that this is a problem. So with that, I ask for your support and I yield.
Okay. Roll call on the motion.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
abstain. Motion carries?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on the new number? Was that, was that motion satisfy it? You want to? That was just an amendment to the number, I think we should take a vote on referring, uh, the new number for public release with no recommendation from this committee.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made, and the second, roll call.
It's the total, right?
The total new number, yep, that you just amended it to.
As the draft transportation number?
Correct, as the draft transportation number for 2020, with no recommendation from the Subcommittee.
Can I, sorry, I didn't really understand.
The new, the new total number that you just amended to be published and for public release has the new transportation number, draft transportation.
I thought that's what we voted on.
No, you voted to amend the number, I think we should take a second vote, just to...
Got it.
Okay.
I yield.
Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Abstain. Okay, next item is a first read and vote to approve the expenditure of one million dollar insurance appropriation to school appropriation. Is there a, uh, motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Questions?
Yeah, question.
Mr. Martins.
Why is this a first read and not simply approving the agenda item?
So that's, um, the committee had the will to support it tonight, so we can expend it, I was hoping they would vote on it, uh, but I didn't want to force it, and that's why I did first read, vote to approve. You have a choice, uh, Mr. Martins? I always hoped that the committee would vote to approve, so we can start expending.
Yeah, because first reading implies there's a second reading coming up.
It also, it also implies that it's the first time that you've seen this.
Okay. And Shane's had the vote to approve, and I, that's what I seconded.
Yes.
You yield, Mr. Martins? Mr. Martins, you yield?
Yes, I yield.
Okay. Mr. Hetzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions about, uh, some of the capital budget requests that were in the initial budget, and where the money's going to be spent, the one point six million dollars over the next two items on the agenda.
I, uh, just in, in full disclosure, uh, would, would it be procedurally, is it easier for the committee to look at both items at once rather than two separate expenditures, so they can see the totality?
Is there a motion, is there a motion to take items three and four together?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Just point of order, Mr. Chair, I think we have a motion already. Someone, the maker of that motion, would withdraw the motion that was made for the one million.
Sure.
If not, I can amend it, I guess, but...
Want to amend your motion, Mr. Hetzel, to include the six hundred thousand as well?
Right. I amend it.
You amend?
To include the second, the fourth item on the agenda, the six hundred thousand.
The new amended motion would be to vote and approve one, one million plus the six hundred thousand, so the total of one point six million, correct?
Yes.
So that's the amend, amendment to the motion, on the motion to combine, and then we'll have discussion on the combined, combination of one million and six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty-four, forty dollars? Roll call.
Mr. Chair, was there a second?
I thought there was a second. Was there a second?
There was.
Yeah.
On, on Mr. Hetzel's motion to combine them?
Yes, Mr. Martin, and then Mr. Hetzel, um, means the second.
All right.
Is there another second?
He made the, made the motion.
Is there another second on the combination?
I don't want to throw a fly in the ointment, Mr. Chairman, but I'm getting the sense that the committee may want to take action to approve not just the first read, but to approve it and dispose of it. I'd hate to throw another amended motion on top of it, but I, I guess if, if looking for that action, it's going to require us to waive all additional readings and enact today.
That's fine. Make that in the form of a motion.
I do, if, if that's the will of my colleagues. If not, I'm okay with it coming back at a later date, I just, if, if the intent is to dispose of it today, then because it's listed as a first read, someone's going to make a motion to waive the additional readings.
Okay, do you make that in the form of a motion?
I do, thank you.
All right, so the new motion is to combine, amended motion is to combine the one million and the six hundred and eight, four hundred and forty dollars, um, and pass through all readings.
That's two separate motions, we've got to have two votes or one?
No, we'll do it in one. Okay? That's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. On the motion, Mr. Aguirre?
On the amendment, yeah.
Yep.
So the reason why it says first read is because it's in the policy handbook of the school committee to say first read.
For policies.
My belief personally, as one member...
For policies.
Is that I did, I don't really care for that, because we meet once a month, so we end up doing a first read, nobody says anything, it goes to the next meeting, and it basically extends things for, just for no reason, to be quite honest. We only meet once a month, a lot of these things are pretty clear. Uh, I don't have a problem supporting this, but I would ask my colleagues to look at our own policy, so that we're not wasting time on other things, because this is...
For what's a subject?
You know, I really just think that's something that needs to be tweaked, because I never, when I first got back on this committee, it was like, first read, vote, don't vote, was, we need to look at our own policy. So I'm in favor of combining them. Uh, with, also, I wanted to just say it again for the record, that this is all stuff that's already been decided before it comes to us, the Subcommittee saw some of it, it's all good things, it's not bad, but I would once again just like to keep saying, we need to get input from the committee before we get these things out in, in public, so that we're not changing things on the fly, or people that are out there watching at home or in the schools think, oh, I'm going to get X line item, and then I come out and say, well, I don't really agree with that, get four members to agree, and then, gone. So I, I don't really like that particular policy, but I think these are all good things, and it's a good use of one-time money. So with that, I want to support it, and I, I yield.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corey, well, let's, let's just at least get the motion out so that we're combining it, and then we can go into questions.
Sure, thank you.
Further questions on the motions?
Yeah, um...
Mr. Martins?
Uh, we just, the first read has always been reserved for, uh, uh, changing of the, uh, what is it called? Policies. That's all that, that the first read, and then it goes to a second read, then, so that you have twice, you can look at it in more detail if you wish, but not for a budget item. It's here, and I guess what, we're eliminating the words first read on number three and number four.
That's exactly the motion for this evening, and it's also, it's combined for purposes of discussion and approval, the 1 million and the 608.
All at the same time, which is fine with me.
All at the same time. Okay.
That's fine with me. I yield.
Okay. All right. Further questions on the motion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Okay, questions on the now combined 1.6 million? Mr. Corey?
Thank you. A comment first. I'm, I'm noticing the line items on, on this one-time money, and I'm really happy to see some of the upgrades targeted for the Talbot Middle School. I'm really excited to see that there's basketball court appropriation there. I think that basketball courts are magnets for positive youth activity, and when a school adds something like that to its premises, then I think that the school is looking towards developing positive relationships with their students, so I'm really happy to see that. Now, with that, I want to know from the superintendent, where's the phonics program slated for, Mr. Superintendent? What grades would the phonics program be?
Um, so it would be, I believe, preschool up through grade two.
Yeah, so the early years, the early, early conditioning?
Yes.
Try to build up their reading skills by grade three?
Phonics programs are for younger children. Reading recovery is for older students.
Yeah, so as they develop their phonics, they got to get ready to take the MCAS by grade three, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I hope that that helps in their development and, and their reading skills. And with the Chromebooks, there's a lot of Chromebooks here. How are they disseminated? Do, are the principals put in work, orders, or are there, is there more of a need at the elementary level or the secondary level?
We, we have a, a technology team has allocated an appropriate number in each of the schools right now, and it's not so much based on equity, because as you can imagine, Derfi has more than the others, given how the testing happens. Our proposal tonight includes upwards of, we'll probably be able to get close to 500 Chromebooks with, with this proposal tonight, and we would distribute them evenly to ensure that we're covering all of, not only our assessment needs, but also our blended learning needs, because if you see in the classrooms when you're visiting, you see the students using the Chromebooks as part of the blended learning.
It's exciting to see, for sure, and I'm glad to see that there's been...
Also, I, I just want to remind the committee that there's also, in the budget, another hundred thousand dollars of technology supplies.
Okay, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Exler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so a few of my concerns, and where I'd personally like to see some of this money spent, if you refer to the document the superintendent just handed out regarding the 600,000 dollars. So, we received one document with our packet, and then this new document that the superintendent handed out reflects the two changes I'd like to see. So, in the overall budget, the superintendent presented us with some capital budget requests. Two requests specifically are Sylvia and Talbot, I'm sorry, Henry Lord and Sylvia's parking lot situation, and, you know, the traffic situation around the schools. So, my concern was, we're saying we want to spend some money on capital budget requests and improving those two sites, and I didn't see anything being spent in this 1.6. So, I asked the superintendent why. I guess there's some issues regarding how we can spend this money right now, and if we can get that money spent before the end of the fiscal year. So, I was wondering what we could do about that to change it. Superintendent feels if we invest some money now in the design and engineering process, that'll make it much easier going forward if we decide to do something about the traffic needs at both of those schools. As you know, it affects the residents, the parents, the students themselves, and those neighborhoods get really congested, and it's been a concern for a while. So, that's why you have this, I guess you can call option B, before you tonight. I like this option, and I don't think it takes away from the, the goals of the superintendent. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Okay. Just for clarification purposes, the amended document that was handed out tonight is the option we are voting on. It is not the, the option from the packet. So, this is the updated version that you are voting on tonight.
Excellent, and that's the one that includes the design and engineering address?
That's correct.
Henry Lord and Sylvia's.
That's correct. So, that 608 that's represented tonight is the one we're voting on, not the former document. Mr. Vice Chair?
Just a quick clarification, if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman. That second document of 608,440 dollars is actually the money that is to cover the reduction in charter school students.
That's correct.
The reimbursement that came over for that.
That's correct.
So, that's, that piece, the million, is a portion of the health insurance.
That's correct.
That was transferred over to account for, at this point, the surplus in that account.
That's correct, and there'll be an additional transfer.
Just for clarification, so the 600,000, 608,440 is for the charter school reduction in enrollment, which caused that money to be returned back to the district, and also the 1 million is for the health insurance cost.
Correct.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Coogan?
I got a question on the phonics program ending at grade two. Why, why is the phonics program ending at grade two? I heard something about reading recovery.
So, reading recovery is a strategy for older students that have already, should have broken the code in their comprehension, and that deepens their comprehension. The phonics program is, is for what we used to call the primary early grades in elementary to get them to, uh, uh, crack the code, lack of a better, can I have Ms. Correa come and answer this as well, in terms of, of the age level that's, where this is appropriate? So, it is an early education curriculum program, K through two, but that doesn't mean there still won't be some third graders and fourth graders who are also using it in some intervention models.
Yeah, I don't know if I call grade three students older students yet, but my concern is that reading is the foundation for their tests the whole way up, and I, I don't want to see phonics end at grade two. I think, you know, being in the schools as much as I am with you or whatever, I don't know, I think phonics has to continue on a little further than grade two. Maybe I'm just old or something, but I think reading fundamentals...
I'll have some, an expert answer this question, because I've got some experts in the audience.
Hi. So, right now, we have something called Reading Streets, which is a program that we have in all of our schools. With, working with all of our principals, we have made additions to the curriculum in order to expand. The phonics program that Dr. Malone is talking about, we're looking at piloting. It's a new, it's called Foundations or Fundations, which is part of the Wilsons Program. So, this is a multi-year rollout of a new program, really heavily trying to train our kindergarten teachers so that we can build from kindergarten to first to second grade. You're absolutely correct. The phonics program is really a focus on learning to read before reading to learn or comprehend. So, it is a continuum. Phonics is really specifically on learning to read, and so that's what we're trying to get our teachers more, more skills and strategies, and also a program that is research-based and is, is proven across the country.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, because it almost sounds like you're saying this is going to be pre-K to two, and it may roll on to three, four, depending on how effective it is or what happens down the road. We got a, like a three-year pilot going, almost.
To evaluate. So, in order to do a full rollout in our K1 and two, it's going to be over a couple of years. Right now, what we've allocated for is, I believe, half of our kindergarten teachers are going to get training with this, so that we'll be able to evaluate it first on the effectiveness, and then do, once we come back, to do a full rollout.
Yeah. I, I, like I said, I don't have a problem with that. I just know that those teachers in the younger grades are getting overworked in some cases with all the things that are thrown on them with typing and the phonics, and I want to make sure it's a good foundational program that helps with reading long-term for these kids. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
So, just to make my, not on that, different issue. So, just to make my point on whether we get information and stuff. So, the original document shows curriculum materials at Derfi for 100,000 dollars. In the new document, it says curriculum materials at Derfi, 35,000 dollars. So, truth in advertising, this vote is to reduce 65,000 dollars from the Derfi curriculum, which they received at another meeting until now. And there's a few additions, like high school athletic supplies of 5,000, middle school intramural 10,000. So, I think when we're voting on things, we need to be able to say it out there so people know what we're actually voting on, which is some of the reason, you know, why we maybe slow things down. But maybe somebody could just say that, why we can cut that much from that, and it might be not a big deal. But it is a substantial amount of money that if I was a Derfi person working at Derfi, I'd say, based on last month's meeting, we're going to get 100,000 dollars for materials, now we're getting 35,000.
There's going to be plenty of money coming through down the road that we're going to look at Derfi, but for right now, that was a place there at 100, before I realized, you know, something, I got to do something on the capital projects, so I get each of the capital projects that I recommended to the committee in the overall operating budget. Each of them is touched upon and here. Talbot, the security cameras and FOBs, Henry Lord and CUS. So, we have a piece of, Henry Lord and Sylvia. We have a piece of each of those capital projects now articulated in this to show our goodwill effort to be able to accomplish and get closer to our goal.
Let me tell you, there's also additional money from the health insurance account that will be transferred as well. So, I think...
No, no, I, I get it, and I'm not looking to argue about it, but it, it just seems like that's a big cut. So, I'm assuming the Derfi folks know that that was the case and that they were going to get that cut.
I got, I mean, Mr. Demarest didn't know what he was getting, so...
Well, I'm saying, based on the number. So, if, if I was at the last meeting when the thing came out, I would be wondering, who's going to give me, if I'm in the principal's shoes, I'm going to be, like, who's giving me the reassurance that that number's going to go back up? And I get, you're the boss, and you can make those recommendations, but I think it just highlights the point of some of the, let me just say this, I think we could have rolled this particular amendment out a little better and a little clearer for the committee to make sure we're all on the same page. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
I just wanted to follow up to Mr. Coogan's comments on the phonics. So, Superintendent, you did say K through two, but does that in fact mean pre-K as well?
Yes.
Pre-K, so, so when they're four years old?
Four-year-olds, what we call K1, yes.
Yeah, that's, that, that's a point of clarification. The big push now on early education, as you and I well know, and I, I just think it's very beneficial. And I also wanted to back up Mr. Coogan's comments on the fact that, you know, there are kids in third, fourth, and fifth grade who are still struggling. Kids develop their reading skills at different stages, and so I would hope that the kids who are still struggling in third, fourth, and fifth grade still receive that type of coaching and mentorship. Is that the case?
So, is, yes, but it's a different kind of program, because it's reading recovery that we use for the older kids, but that's a core part of our mission, is what we do, and we never stop getting kids to grade level and beyond in their reading capabilities.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Further questions, further comments? Okay. There was a motion already made to vote and approve?
No, no.
There was not. Okay, is there a motion to vote and approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made to vote and approve the 1.6, and it has been seconded. All right, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Just a comment after that. I think it's a good job that the committee did on this particular matter. I think it was not expected, obviously, that we were going to have this kind of money coming back to the district and additional money to spend, so I'm really proud that a lot of the capital needs that have maybe gone unaddressed for a number of years are of no fault to anybody beside the fact that we didn't have money in the, in the district to spend on these capital needs are being adjusted and addressed. So, good work on the, on the committee, the subcommittee, as well as the superintendent and his team. This is, this is going to go to some really great stuff. Kid safety with the FOBs, the cameras, and some of the capital needs as well as some of the programming. So, very happy about that, and I look forward to the additional millions of dollars that we're going to spend in the next four months, too. So, very good. Okay, next.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Martins, yes.
I request parliamentary inquiry for item number five.
Yes.
And looking at this item, this is in violation of the city charter, Article Four, Sections 4.1 and 4.2. And thus, it's not an appropriate item to be voted upon by this committee.
I concur with you as well. I do have a copy here from the city's attorney, Judge Macy, that I can make available to the committee. I don't know if the superintendent made it available. I know we've seen a, or we spoke about it. We spoke, we can circulate this copy here, and you are correct. It does violate the charter.
As written, so just as a way, by, by way of motion?
Mr. Martins, as the floor? Mr. Costa?
He's just asking for an inquiry.
Yep.
You answered him.
I answered, exactly.
Right, so that was the inquiry.
Okay. I haven't called any, did you, did you want to speak on the, on the matter? I haven't...
I, I yield. It's a violation of Articles Four, Sections Four, One, and Four, Two.
That's correct. Thank you. Mr. Costa, do you have one way, one way in on this, or...
So, are we discussing school credit policy BDB, BEDB, or do we just skip right over that one?
Nope, that's what we're on.
That would be low.
So, which one did you just rule that the city corporation council said was in violation? Because I think we skipped over four and went to five. I understand there's, you know, some angst.
Item number five is the discussion, school committee policies, BDB and BEDB.
Correct. So, are we discussing that, or are we discussing the next one, which...
I think there's a correlation between the two.
My colleague rendered his legal opinion on.
I think there's a correlation between the two. Would you like to comment on BDB and BEDB?
Right, so my comment on that one would be that we do have set policy that's been adopted by this committee in our policy manual. With respect to item number five, I would suggest that I too concur, and I'm not an attorney, but asking legal counsel, our attorney, he's indicated to me that the motion as proposed would have been in conflict with the city charter. So, I'm prepared tonight to just simply amend that motion to reflect that the chair, upon consultation with the vice chair and the superintendent of schools, shall approve the agenda for the school committee regular meetings, and then the same language applies. So, I would simply offer that up as an amended motion.
Okay. So, just clarifying what the charter already says, correct?
It, it's now more in concert with...
Correct.
My motion before would have been in conflict with the city charter.
Correct.
Correct, because what it was asking is that it, it changed the duties of the chair in the approval process.
Correct.
So, this goes back in line with the city charter says. I, I mean, I could have a conversation about the charter, but that's, that's for another day, but it is what it is. It's, it's the law of the, the city by virtue of the voters, and so I'm not looking to cause any kind of unrest upon what the charter says and what our policies say. I think they should be in concert. So, I'm simply offering it up as a, as an amended motion to strike where it says vice chair, make that chair, and then where it said chair, add the word vice, and the rest of the motion stands. I offer that as an amended motion.
Okay, that is an amended motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion on the amended motion. So, just to be clear, yeah, Mr. Costa?
No, no, if you...
No, just to be clear, so the amended motion is just taking the word vice chair and having it be, be the chair, because it correlates with the charter, which says and states that the charter shall approve the agenda?
Correct.
All right, so we're just aligning the policies of the committee more closely with the charter?
Correct.
Okay.
But I think it also, may, I'm sorry, may I?
No, please.
Thank you. So, let me just say this, and I think I said it last meeting. We would be having this conversation if there were items that needed to come before the committee that came before the committee. So, I'm not looking to turn this into a, a back and forth between you as chair and this committee, or me as the vice chairman and you as the chair. I feel very strongly, as I said it before, and I'll say it again, that items that are school department business-related need to be before this committee. And I'm not saying it for the reasons of, you know, hamstringing the city into, you know, financial obligations that they may not be able to meet, but I still think in the issue of transparency, this committee should at least discuss those items. Now, if the committee decides that they want to take some action against it, obviously, that comes with the ability to fund those things, and if the city can't, well, then the city can't. But I still think that the number of items that needed to be before this committee should have been here. We should have had those discussions so the public knew we were paying attention to the issues that were going on in the schools, and that we were willing to have the conversation and come to some sort of compromise or, or give some sort of direct direction to how to fix those. I still think that this motion will be better aligned with the city charter. In addition to that, I think it gives members an opportunity to weigh in and suggest items for the chair's consideration. So, and if they're not put on there, then I think the motion goes a little further and offers up an opportunity either through new business and a vote at a committee, or through new business and, and an action taken if it's deemed to be an emergency. So, with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And I just want the committee to know that it's, it's all, I always welcome discussion. I always welcome people calling, texting, emailing. If there is an item that you want on the agenda, please let me know directly. I do set the agenda as the final approval. However, the agenda is crafted prior to the meetings based on the needs of the school system by the superintendent, his secretary, as well as the vice chair, because those are the three individuals working most closely with the needs of the department. It is very rare that I remove items off the agenda unless I need clarifying information, which I had made clear in the last, last item. To my knowledge, I don't think, I, we scanned my email, I haven't seen any recommendations from any member on any items that should have been on any past agendas that have not been on the agendas. So, I want that to be clear, but I want to extend an invitation that if there is any item that you feel should be on the chair, on the agenda, please let me know as the chair via email, text message, phone call, whatever it is, and it will be on the agenda. So, I don't, I don't want there to be any, any belief that there will
So, the agenda that reads the BDB and the BEDB, that was first up. On those two issues, I think if we pass the number five, which is the next one, it'll actually be not in concert with our own policies.
Wait, that's what we're doing. He's, I think the motion was to amend the school committee's policies to more closely reflect the charter.
Right. But we have to state what those are more specifically. So, the two, the two that I refer to is, one is the duties of the vice chairman, which is BDB. It should list in there that is, one of his assigned duties as vice chair would be to go over the agenda. I think that's been a practice that has been happening, but not necessarily in policy. That would be one of my concerns. The second one is on the, the five day, the three days to have the agenda out. So, it reads, "The agenda, together with supporting materials, will be distributed to the school committee members no less than three business days prior to the meeting to permit adequate time to prepare for the meeting." I think that's not necessarily being followed to the letter of what we need. So, I think we need to actually have the agendas, since we meet monthly, completed at least minimum of five, maybe even seven days before, so that we can actually have time to digest the agenda, to look at it. We've had this argument in the prior meetings where if I never, as one member, see the agenda until it comes out on Friday, how can I even comment on it or know what's on there, what's not on there? So, I think we need to, I'm in favor of this motion, but at the same time, whatever that is relative to either five days or seven days, we have to go back to this and make sure that we get it done ahead of time because I don't think it's being followed at present. But I am in support of the thing, the amendment. School committee members should be able to ask, I also think that, and I will say this for, as one member to the superintendent, if there's ever anything that comes before you that you need on this agenda, and any, whether it's this mayor, the next mayor, or any mayor doesn't put it on the agenda, please let the committee members know so we can address it right away. I don't anticipate that being a problem, but I don't like to just be sitting in the dark relative to that. So, with that, I yield.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Just a point of clarification. My intent with the motion would have been, and that's why I asked for that particular policy to be on the agenda. So, if it is adopted, it would fall under BDB in our policy manual. I think the mayor had indicated that was the intent. But if it's not clear, if the motion does carry, that it would fall under BDB within our existing policies. As far as, you know, the timeframe for which agendas, you know, get to school committee members, I think that's, I think it's separate. I agree my colleague's comments. I think we should get it out as timely as we can. And if it's not being met, I think it's a matter of the superintendent working to get it out more expeditiously. But I think that's separate from this motion, but certainly something we can obviously address. I yield.
Mr. Superintendent?
I would only ask the committee that I could do a better job of making sure that the agendas get sent on, the agenda and binder gets sent on Wednesday. But if, I think five days would put me in a bind in terms of having the most updated information to the committee. Because the committee has to understand how hard we work, back me up, Deb, to put these agendas together and get everything out and, to the committee. But we will do, I promise, if you allow this to go on for a couple of months, we'll test it out, that I would have the agendas couriered to your door on Wednesday, agenda and binder. So, you would have then Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday to Monday. It gives you five days of prep. But let's live by the, what the current policy is. And I would commit to doing that. And if I fail at it, we can have more discussion. But the change now would, would lead into a little bit of hardship for us.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I'm not trying to give you any hardship at all. The only thing I'm trying to be is consistent. When we look at the, the committee member wanted to send something not later than five business days before the date of the meeting, you know, to try and put their thing on the agenda. So, all I would ask is that the agenda doesn't necessarily have to have the supporting documents, because I do agree that it's sometimes a lot of work. But would help me as one member of the committee if we at least got the agenda on a Wednesday. So, if we get the agenda on a Wednesday, even voluntarily, if there's something on that agenda that I, as one member, say, well, I'd like to see X, Y, and Z to back that statement up, we can get that on Friday. I don't think everything needs to be rushed. But right now, we're not even getting the agenda until too, too late.
Point of information for my colleague, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Vice Chair?
So, just a point of information. I, I agree, Mr. Aguirre. The practice has been, we meet Monday evening with, for the draft agenda. And then, the process after that is it then goes down to the mayor's office for consideration. So, we're done with our piece on Monday. But my understanding is maybe some proposed changes on how it's done. I think we're going to set specific times with the mayor to go over it on a Monday. Regardless, we'll try to get it out, I think, is that the intent is to get it to and the rest of the members as quickly as possible. We're not looking to hold it up. But if there's additional information that's needed, I would imagine that sometimes that causes, you know, a delay in a final approval. I can't speak to that. But the intent would be, we meet, discuss the draft. Once it's finally approved, then I can't see why it wouldn't be able to go out. I yield.
Mr. Vice, uh, Mr. Aguirre?
Can I ask, can I ask the attorney in the room a question through you, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So, the piece of the policy that reads three days before, on a typical Monday evening meeting, what would that policy that's currently in place require?
Yes, I couldn't quite get everything you said. Mr. Aguirre, could you repeat that again, please?
So, it currently says, "The agenda, together with supporting materials, will be distributed to the school committee members no less than three business days prior to the meeting to permit adequate time to prepare for that meeting."
Right.
On a typical Monday at 5:30 meeting, what time would you interpret that three day, three business days prior to mean getting all the agenda and the supporting documents in as current practice?
I would think without pulling up my calculator, I think Wednesday.
And that's the current policy?
Yes.
With that, I yield.
Yeah. So, I mean, since we're on this topic, you know, I don't want any committee members to, to my knowledge, there hasn't been many items, if any, that have not made it to the, to the committee in a timely manner for action. Even the last item that we discussed that had a timeline for the chiller was amended on the floor. So, I think the current way that it's been, been done is working. But I don't want in a month or two to be a confusion. It is not in, in the policy that the vice chair even is meeting with the superintendent to draft an agenda. So, I think it was mentioned by Mr. Aguirre at the last meeting. So, for clarification and for full transparency and for everyone on the committees involved in the process, I would recommend and somebody make a motion tonight to allow the draft agenda to be totally sent out, not for discussion purposes, but for viewing purposes in advance of those meetings. So that if there is something that needs to be on the agenda, we can get it on the agenda. I think that that's important. So, I'm going to, if it's not made it as a policy, I'm going to, I'm going to have that be my policy going forward. But if that's the will of the committee to put it in writing as well, that's fine. But I agree with Mr. Aguirre's point. It isn't even in the policy that the vice chair drafts the draft agenda with the superintendent. That became practice, but doesn't have to be what we do going forward. So, I think it's, it's important that the committee weighs in on that. If you like the way it's going, fine. We'll keep it the way it's going. If you want more information, more transparency, then we can send out the draft agendas much earlier to get more input as we go through the process. We may even take it a step further. I know on the city's side, we invite all counselors, city counselors, to meet with Mary Sahadi, Kathy Ann Viveras, myself, and Judge Macy prior to the meetings. I don't know if that happens on this side with the superintendent. I don't know if members of the committee are meeting in advance of the meetings so that they have full information. But maybe that's something that the school committee should start doing with the superintendent going forward. But Mr. Aguirre, you have a comment on that?
My last comment is just to not get into the, whether the vice chair should or not. I think we've been, he's been doing it with the superintendent since I've been on this board. I think that's fine. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. I just think that by passing this motion, we actually just put it into the policy that that will be the practice that the vice chair, whether it be Mr. Costa or whoever in the future, can consult, which is fine. Mayor has the final vote, and the current policy is the Wednesday for the thing. So, I personally want to vote just to keep it like that. I think it's been working. And I don't necessarily think there's been any real major issues going on. But ultimately, it'll be in the policy of the school committee that the vice chair, in addition to his other duties, does have some sort of additional responsibility to talk to the chairman. I like the fact that that's now going to be in policy because that's what kind of been in practice without policy. So, I like just having it be clean. And I will like to support this. And I'm appreciative of the Wednesday offer. I think it'll help us. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions? Mr. Martins?
I think it's, I think it's pretty clear that the duties of the vice chair has always been in the absence of the chair. Nothing has happened that has hidden any particular item that if it hasn't been included, and I don't know what, what item that might be, if it hasn't been included, it's brought on to the next meeting. There is no urgency where there has to be another person in the chain of developing the agenda for the school committee in there. The superintendent meets with the mayor, the chair in there, and comes up with the budget. To end up and having going out to the vice chair to be inside there, then you, you know, it's not a, a separate meeting. The vice chair doesn't have any more or any less, or I don't have any more or any less authority than what the vice chair has, except that when I, the absence of the mayor, the vice chair takes over in conducting the, the meeting. If indeed, the chair is on business somewhere and it has to be where the committee meeting, agenda has to be established, then fine. That's what, that's in consultation with the superintendent and the vice chair at that point and only at that point. And it's not a routine thing that indeed it should have where the, the chair in consultation with the vice chair and the superintendent to come up here. Because then, if that's the case, then I also want to be in on determining what goes on, on the agenda. And everybody else would like to have their turn in going on what goes into the agenda. I'm sorry, I don't see any reason to change what is currently has been and has been there for years and has been working. There's absolutely no reason to do that. I yield.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Move the question, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. We're going to move the question. The question on the table is the amended version. And can we repeat the amendment? Because I lost it. What is the amendment?
Do you want to read it in its entirety?
Mr. Costa.
Do you want to read it in its entirety so that members know?
Yep.
The amended motion is the chair, upon consultation with the vice chair and the superintendent of schools, shall approve the agenda for the school committee regular meetings. School committee member may request that any topic within the jurisdiction or forum of school committee be placed on the agenda of any school committee regular meeting. The school committee member shall make his or her request in writing to the chair, vice chair, and superintendent of schools, not later than five business days before the date of the scheduled school committee regular meeting. The topic shall be placed on the agenda of the regular meeting of the school committee. If for whatever reason, the requested topic is not placed on the agenda of the school committee regular meeting, any school committee member may move under new business that the requested agenda topic be placed on the agenda of the next meeting of the school committee. If the requested topic must be acted upon prior to the next scheduled school committee regular meeting, then any school committee member may introduce the topic under new business for discussion and/or vote.
Just a question to Attorney Sot, just for clarification. If an item is not on the agenda and it's brought under new business, would it be an open meeting violation to take the vote at that meeting because the public was not aware in advance of the meeting that that item would be voted on at the meeting?
Generally speaking, that would have been a violation of the open meeting law. However, the Attorney General's Office has ruled that where the chair is aware of a particular item and declines to put it on the agenda, then at that point, it can be brought up at a, a meeting by an individual, by the individual or other individual and not be declared to be a, an open meeting law violation. I crushed everybody on that. I did speak to the Attorney General's Office on that. It's just one case. It's an outlier case. It was because it was a concern about a, a specific body that they were having difficulty with. It's not something they recommend. It's not something they promote. And as a matter of fact, would look to the committee to work out any, any issues with respect to that. From what we're hearing here tonight, that, that matter should be almost negligible going forward that we would have an issue like that. But it is something that the Attorney General has ruled on and has ruled that that would not be declared to be an open meeting law violation, even though, as you're rightly, you're rightly stating, it is contrary to the spirit of the open meeting law.
Further, second follow-up question.
Yep.
Items brought under new business are supposed to be not anticipated by the chair. If the chair suggests that they could anticipate that that item could have been brought up, could that item not be valid on the, on the floor?
If in fact, the question is, the fact that you would be aware of the, of the issue, why would it be brought up under new business? If you issued-
Exactly the exercise we're talking about. If the chair does not, does not put something on the meeting, on the agenda, and a committee member brings it up under new business, the chair could have anticipated that that item would have been brought up under new business.
That's correct. And that's what this particular case addresses, the fact that that is allowable. They would not find that to be a violation of the open meeting law.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Okay.
Motion, move the question, Mr. Chair.
Motion to move the question. Seconded, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
What are we voting on at present time?
To move the question.
To move the question.
I'm sorry?
To just move the question along.
To move the question?
Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Cor, uh, Mayor Correa?
Yes.
Roll call and a motion, Mr. Chair?
Okay, roll call. Motion that has been made and amended.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
No.
Mayor Correa?
No.
Okay. Any other new bit, well, new business not running tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? There was a second. Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?